I'll call the mil- meeting to order. Excuse my voice, if it breaks, I have a frog in my throat. Don't worry how it got there. Before we start, let me read the evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm may sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you've reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. With that out of the way, you have the minutes from last month's meeting. Any additions or corrections to the minutes of August 25th? I have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion passes. We have no public hearings tonight. Any public input on items on the agenda? Step to the mic and give us your name.
My name's Melody Silverberg.
Come up to the mic so the recorder can get it.
Thank you. My name's Melody Silverberg. I'm the president of the Laurel Valley Properties, Property Owners Association, and I want to talk about the proposed re-subdivision and additional lots that are, have been requested by Laurel Valley Golf LLC.
Okay.
Okay. We understand that the owners of Laurel Valley Golf LLC are trying to enlarge some lots, add additional lots adjacent to current LVPOA property. And I did provide a memorandum to the committee, so I'll try to keep my comments brief. The main concern that we have is the use of our private roads and facilities in the course of building, selling, developing these lots. And we understand that the planning commission, in the memorandum that was put out by John Lamb and so forth, that there has to be an agreement between the developer of these lots and the Property Owners Association. And we have not had any kind of conversation about that, so we want to make sure that the planning commission is aware that at this point in time, we don't have an agreement for the use of those roads. The other thing is, there's drainage easement, and we're on, we are looking into what that exactly entails, because that's also one of the things we have to have an agreement on. And the other, the, so we know what we're, what we would be assuming responsibility for if we chose to do that. The last thing is the congestion on the roads, because the roads leading into and out of Laurel Valley are narrow and windy, and there is, has been concern at the most recent Property Owners Association general meeting, annual meeting, about ingress and egress to the neighborhood because of the narrow roads and because there's only two ways in and out, and they both converge at the same point, just about a half a mile outside of Laurel Valley. If we had a natural disaster, a tornado, a fire, especially a fire, there are a lot of concerns that we would not be able to get emergency services in, and we would not be able to adequately evacuate our residents under the existing circumstances, and additional density would only make that problem worse. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm one of the owners of Laurel Valley and Fairways Vista's subdivision. One thing I'd like to start off with to clear up some of the misunderstandings, I guess, is that we fully intend to be a member of the Laurel Valley Property Owners Association and intend to go by all their bylaws, restrictions, just like any other member there. And I do have a copy of the objections from the POA, Ms. Silverberg. And number one, the traffic, years ago Laurel Valley was much more active than it is now when the golf course was doing well, the restaurant and all. So I don't think we have nearly as much traffic as we did at one time. Also, as you see on your information, we're only asking for five new lots. All the other lots, the nine other lots, we're expanding to make those larger lots. So they're already members of Laurel Valley, so the traffic will be there one way or the other. So the net is five lots. And she mentioned the maintenance of the road. By being members of POA, we'll be paying this $600 fee like everybody else to maintain the roads. And mentions the traffic at the front gate, the same, same situation there. And mentions potential use, unauthorized use of the trash and recycling facilities. Same situation, we would be adding five new people, five new homes to that. Also, she, she mentioned construction of homes, the restrictions and all. Again, by being members, we have to adhere to that. The annual assessment, we'll, we'll be paying that. The thing I'd like for the board to consider, other than what I've said, is that they're asking for all of this before we can do anything. If that happens, I fear that we'll be delayed forever and ever and ever, and the season short on what we're trying to do as far as market these existing lots. So, so if, if we can't get them done, it, there's no question that it would hurt our situation. And we'll be complying with everything that Blount County requires us to do. And my, my main point is, I would ask that the board not enforce their requirement at this meeting for Laurel Valley POA to agree with us. I have no idea when their next meeting would be or when they would call it. The problem, as you know, this time of year, the weather's gonna get bad, but we fully intend to make it a nicer neighborhood. And, and the property itself is unrestricted. It's, a lot of golf courses have restricted uses on it. This, this is not. So we're, we're not asking to put a camper park or anything like that in there. We, we want it to be a residential neighborhood and hopefully improve some of the looks. By the way, this neighborhood has two new homes on it. One, one of those homes is, I know they're asking over $900,000 for it. The other one, I'm, I'm sure is $750 or $800. So, so there's no reason that we would be trying to get these lots sold at, at some ridiculously low price. But that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
There's no other public input? Public input on items on the agenda is closed. We move to site plans. Site plan, East Lamar Alexander Parkway across the river at Pumpkin Lane. Addition of pavilion to existing campground. John?
You have to bear with me, I'm not as efficient as Marlene in doing some of the administrative part of this. This is an addition of a pavilion. I've determined that this is a grandfathered campground. I've actually done some certification for beer license and so forth, and we went through all that process to certify that it was a bona fide, non-conforming use and grandfathered. So this is an expansion in a, of a campground or a modification of a campground. You have a site plan. The pavilion is open. It meets all the setbacks. The only issue is that it is in flood plain, and the elevation needs to be established there, and the electrical facilities need to be raised up above the flood plain. In other words, you don't want to have electrical facilities in, in the flood plain. So with that, I would recommend for approval, subject to the determination of the elevation on the structure and the location of the electrical connections above that.
Any questions or comments from Commissioner? Yes, Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you're part of the association...
Wait a minute, we're on the pavilion.
Oh, you were at BASTA. I have nothing to say.
We'll come back to Fairway Vista's. That was public input.
Motion to approve with John's recommendation.
We have a motion and a second to approve site plan for the pavilion, subject to conformance to requirements.
Who was the second?
Brad.
Brad, okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carries. Site plan is approved. Steve, you understand the requirements, electrical above flood plain. Okay, thank you. Site plan, additions of a restroom and walk-in coolers, and extension of gas island canopy with addition of gas dispenser at 2942 West Lamar Alexander Parkway by Kenjo Markets.
Is anybody here to represent that? Okay, I, I think I might have failed to give them the time and the date, so I'll have to bear the burden on this. The proponent said that the canopy part of this is optional, and so if that is something that can't be accommodated, it's really just a simple extension of it, but it goes further into the setback off of Highway 321. If you want to approve that, it should be conditioned on obtaining a variance for the gas island canopy extension, and also approval of septic for additional bathroom. Other than that, everything looks in order and is ready to be approved.
Any questions or comments on the site plan? Not, do I have a motion?
I make a motion for approval for the site plan as written with a variance granted for the canopy extension.
Okay, the grant, the variance asked for to the BZA.
Yes, it would, that would have to go to BZA. You would basically approve it subject to the BZA.
Subject to BZA.
Okay.
Excuse me, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carries. Okay, Commissioner Carter, now you're on. Resubdivision, we're doing preliminary and final plats, major subdivisions. Resubdivision of lots 1 to 4, 12 to 16, Fairway Vista, and adjacent tracks, 17 to 21, off of Hunter Road in Laurel Valley. Doug, you got this one?
Yeah, I'll give it, I'll start, and maybe I'll answer Mr. Carter's questions along the way. I wanna, I wanna start by looking at the plat, item D1.
Mr. Chairman, I need to say that I was drawing on voting on this one, but I can answer any questions that might have about this particular survey.
Okay.
Okay, I just, I first want to point out the lots that are new. I think that's important to understand. Those are lots 17, 18, and 19, which are gonna all be accessed off of Country Club Drive. Everybody see that? And then lots 20 and 21, which will be off Hunter Run Road. Both of those are existing, paved, Laurel Valley, owned and maintained, private roads. All of the other lots that you see are simply being made larger. I am going to start on page two, and I'm going to read for the record, into the record, the outstanding items to be completed. And then I would like to take a minute to address the letter from Melody, maybe clear a few items up, and Mr. Crippen's comments as well. So outstanding items to be completed. Number one, a topographic mop, topographic map for new lots only, and I'd like, you've already supplied that to us, so that item has been completed. Number two is a letter from an engineer stating that the new lots can be accommodated by the existing drainage facilities in Laurel Valley. This is a requirement for major plats, or when new lots may impact existing drainage facilities. It's a little bit tricky in this particular situation, because the drainage facilities for Laurel Valley are actually on Mr. Crippen's property on the golf course. So that's something we'll have to be cognizant of and see if, how they handle that with the documentation that comes into us.
You had the letter from Best Associates about that, didn't you?
I don't understand the question.
The drainage. I think the...
No, I did not.
His engineer sent a, an email, a letter, but I don't think we received it yet.
I told Mr. Crippen that today. I do not have it.
I've got it right here.
Okay. Well, it's still conditioned to plat approval. The letter may or may not be satisfactory. I can review it later, and we'll communicate with the engineer. But I also think that needs to tie into the comments of Melody under number three on her letter, and I'll get back to that. Number three, Property Owners Association documentation for all lots, new and existing, for maintenance responsibility of the Laurel Valley roads, Laurel Valley drainage facilities, and the shared easement for lots 17, 18, and 19, because they are actually gonna share a driveway, so there'll be that additional item, and that'll be private to the subdivision and not Laurel Valley. It'll be in addition to Hunter Run. And if Laurel Valley Homeowners Association wants to take over the driveway, then that'll be up to them. Number four, electric for five lots or more shall be underground unless overhead power is existing. Any lots not currently served by overhead power must be underground. Electric utility company shall certify the final plat that electric service is available or assured it has been posted by the owner with the utility. And most of those lots have overhead, like I said, any new lots, that'll, they'll have to go, they'll drop down from the pole and go underground. Number five, sewer utility company shall certify the plat that sewer is available to all lots or assured it has been posted to the, by the owner with the utility. And I do have some communication with utility company. They have certified that these lots can be served. Total of 18, it'll be a total of 18 lots. Five new, 13 made larger. 13 are already on sewer. Their system can go up to 19, but they have not certified that to us in a letter yet, nor have they put it on the plat. So those are the requirements. Number six, will be the final signature plats and a $40 per lot plating fee for all new lots. And I put on here, replanted lots have no fee. I'd like to start first, before you move forward on Melody's letter. Item number one, I, I think that's addressed in our outstanding item to be completed, number three, where we actually require the POA documentation to be supplied to us, and usually that'll be either by one party or the other, but it includes both. We'll review it and make sure that those lots are responsible for maintenance of the Laurel Valley roads, along with the people in the subdivision already. And for, like I said, I think they're gonna have to work on the maintenance responsibility portion for drainage facilities, but our Property Owners Association documentation that we require for all subdivisions that have drainage facilities, we require that the homeowners themselves maintain that, those facilities. So that's what we're gonna hold here and do the same. Let's see. I think number two is tied into number one, is it not, Melody?
Yes.
Okay. Number three is the drainage facilities. I mentioned that, and I'll go back to the more specific question she asked on here about the 20-foot easement. There's actually a drainage easement that runs through the center of lots 12R, 13R, 14R, 15R, and 16R, and it goes down to what you see, it looks like a wastewater system. It actually runs across that property and goes down to the pond, which is the drainage facility, which is on Mr. Crippen's property, which is the golf course. It is not atypical at all that creeks cross properties in Blount County. And unless someone has actually a plan to cross that creek in any particular, for any particular reason, we just review the plat as normal. If there's, if it's in a flood plain, we note that on the plat. In this case, it is not. And as I inform Melody, I'm, the reason I'm repeating this is because you all haven't had the benefit of hearing it, but if, if an individual decides that they want to build their home beyond that creek, and they have to put a pipe in that creek and drive, build a driveway across it, then they'll be held to a set of regulations that are managed by the state of Tennessee. And we will obviously be notified by the time they pull a building permit where they're gonna put their house, and those people will be notified that they'll need to get a state permit most likely to cross that creek. And then if there's any violations, the state would handle it. But that is a part of that drainage facility. And like I mentioned also, this drainage creek not only drains the golf course, but it drains a lot, a lot of other lots that are part of Laurel Valley, and then they go back to the drainage facility on Mr. Crippen's property. Number four, increased population density. I understood all the comments that were said about the roads, and they are valid safety concerns, and they always have been. The roads in Laurel Valley were built before, we had subdivision regulations from what I can tell, and we have standards for the number of lots off a certain width of roads, but it only applies to current and future subdivisions of land. And we've had standards in the past, but this subdivision predates our subdivision regulations. And as long as I've been here, we've approved every single subdivision in Laurel Valley as it has come in, as it, as it applies. If you had a county road that was 18-foot wide, existing county road, I don't know that we've ever gotten to a conversation that limited the number of lots off that county road. These are internal private roads. We currently have regulations that say you can only have up to 100 and 180 lots off of internal looping roads with one or two roads, like a boulevard going into it. But we've never applied that standard to Laurel Valley. And I don't know how we would start now, or how we would start counting all the lots, or where we would start counting the lots, because Laurel Road, I believe, the internal Laurel Road is a loop road. So, you know, how do you, you count 180 lots off of every road off of there, or, I don't know. That's something we've never determined. So I just wanted to say that for the record, that all the pre, all the construction of what was there until the time we had subdivision regulation was pretty substantial. They have added lots since over the years, and we continue to do so. One thing I mentioned to Melody on the phone that could occur if they decide to divide the golf course up as five acre tracks, there might be a possibility to do it exempt, and we would never review it anyway. So having said that, I, I think I've addressed all these questions. One thing I did want to say about Mr. Crippen's comment about asking for one item to be exempt from your, from your recommendation or approval, I think he's referring to item three, and that would be the Property Owners Association documentation for all lots, for the maintenance responsibility of Laurel Valley roads. I wouldn't take that out. I don't know when their meetings are, but we would, if you leave that item in, and he gets approval, he gets approval conditional upon that. Whenever that occurs, it might be six months from now, or a year from now, or whenever it is, until those documentations were, documentation was brought to us, we reviewed it, and all sides were happy with it, we would not sign the plat. Okay.
John?
I could just add one thing to that, as far as the application of our standards of the maximum number of lots off of a one entrance. I did discuss that a long time ago when subdivisions were coming in, adding to Laurel Valley. It's back in the time of Norman Newton. And Norman gave me an opinion that since Laurel Valley was there before we had that regulation, it is basically grandfathered in its present situation. So I want to confirm that, that we, we did have that discussion many, many years ago when other plots were being added and other subdivisions were coming in.
Commissioner Carter, you had started to ask questions, it clarified, okay.
Are there any structures or buildings on...
Turn your mic on, Tom.
Are there any buildings or structures on any lots now, in this phase?
Uh, well, yeah, there are, but they're existing lots. I think lot 5R and maybe 8 or 9R1, one of those, there's two houses in there. They're in the development, but they're not on any of these lots.
There's a house on 5R, and there's a new house under construction on 9R1.
Okay, yeah, that's right, then.
What part of the golf course area is this?
It's on actually two different holes. Mr. Crippen can tell you what holes are on.
It's hole number one and hole number three.
Gotcha.
This is the subdivision over the valley.
So this is kind of the valley that slopes in and then runs towards Laurel Lake?
Yes.
Obviously, you're making your, part of this lots are making bigger, which is a good thing, right?
It's inconsequential since they're on sewer. It's a good thing if you want a bigger yard.
Any other questions or comments?
You said this, this is between hole number one and hole number three?
Yes.
Aren't there some condominiums there between those two holes, just behind hole number two, I believe?
Exactly, on the north, probably number hole, number one hole side of the, of the road.
Pardon me?
If you're gonna have a discussion, it might be better to come up to me.
Before you do that, it's, it's on the, it's on the plat, Mr. French. It's right on your, it's right on this plat, right in the middle. Hunter Run, Hunter Run condominiums.
I see it where Hunter, yeah. Hunter Run Road, yeah, I see it now, the condominiums are there.
Right next to lot 1R.
I'm trying to orient myself with the map, is what I'm trying to do.
Where's the number one green, next to the...
No, I, I'm, I mean, I'm familiar, I just came from there two weeks, a week ago. I played golf up there quite a few times. I'm trying to orient this map. Where, where is the clubhouse?
If you're, if you're on the number one hole, I believe it's on the left side of the Fairway Bridge. The wind damage is number three.
All that is, right now, is just brush, trees, and a, and a kind of a valley there, right?
It's got a slope, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's one big house on each side of the road.
Yeah, I know where the condominiums are.
Clubhouse is right there.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
For everybody else, the clubhouse is right up here by the pond.
And the upper left, upper right-hand corner, Ron? The upper right-hand corner? Up here?
Yeah.
This is Laurel Road and the, and the lake, or the dry lake, is just across Laurel Lake, Laurel Road there. So that's that, kind of that meadow that is between Hunter's Road and Pioneer Trail.
Mr. French, if you come in the front gate at the Canalever Hut, make a left, Hunter Run Road is the first road on the right.
Any other questions or comments? Now Bruce, did you have any comments?
I'm sorry?
You just had it on to answer questions. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion for approval subject to that, recommendations for both affirmative and clerk-remanded finalizing.
Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve plat, subject to outstanding items to be completed, which includes items one through six in your notes. There's no further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carries. Let the record note that Commissioner McCollin abstained. Doug, you've got item two?
Yes, I'm ready. A miscellaneous item, page three. This is the Haggard property off Maple Lane by Louis Haggard.
Can I, can I get clarification on this? We actually did the preliminary...
And final.
And, okay, Montgomery Farms is not on the agenda.
What are you, I'm not sure what you're looking at.
Okay.
No, we have no Montgomery Farms. That was last month. That was last month.
Marlene, put that on, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah. I was just confused by the checklist here. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna start over. Haggard property off Maple Lane by Louis Haggard. Two lots with a variance request, a lot size for lot two, and reduced right-of-way dedication for lot one. Outstanding items to be completed. If you want to look at the plat in marked item miscellaneous one, that's the one that we were given and brought to the planning commission. The other one that I handed out before the meeting is sitting in front of you. And what they've done is you could get them both facing the same direction. Is lot two, they've made it a little bit larger and made lot one smaller so that they can be both as close to thirty thousand square feet as possible. And that was at the request of myself because of our regulations and the Environmental Health Department. I am going to read the outstanding items to be completed into the record, and it applies to the plat before you, not the one labeled miscellaneous one in the packet. Number one, consideration of variances of being requested by the planning commission. Once again, one variance is for lot two to be made a little smaller. And the other is for the reduced setback on lot one, not setback, dedication of right-of-way. We require twenty-five foot off of center, and for a little dog leg there, they've reduced it down to twenty-four point six feet, which is a little bit less than six inches in variation. The highway and superintendent has recommended we accept it the way it is so that that porch stays off of his right-of-way. And we have done that in the past on a routine basis. The purpose of the variance request to divide the property in the first place is there are two existing homes, and the owner wishes to sell one and finding it hard to do with them being on one piece of property. And one of the reasons, and the surveyor made a good point, that the lot is less is because of the dedication of right-of-way. They had to give up, obviously, land for that. So number one, consideration of variances of being requested by the planning commission. Number two, Environmental Health Department certification on the final plat and any potential adjustment to lot lines for duplication area to either lot. Simply because we moved the line to satisfy our comments so far. Mr. Ferguson still has to do his full review on this, and that line still may move. So I just want to make you aware of that. Number three, signature plats and a twenty-dollar per lot plating fee. And number four, pending a variance consideration by the BZA. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions?
The variance by BZA, is that on the lot size or the right-of-way?
Lot size.
Make a motion to approve, subject to staff's recommendation and the BZA requirement.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, subject to recommendations and pending... Do we need our variance on the lot size?
You have to, I would do it, if you're going to approve it, I would approve it. I would approve it with the two variance requests and outstanding items to be completed.
Okay, but is one of those variances is ours, right?
Two are of ours, and it goes to the BZA for a separate variance.
Okay. That end your motion, Commissioner McCollum? I do, everybody understands? We have a motion to approve the site plan as presented, subject to the Health Department, Health Department certifying that there is sufficient septic space and it will require a variance by the BZA. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries, and that is the site plan that was on your tape on your desk tonight. All right, long range.
I'll just go into staff reports and report that you still are required to have four hours of training this year, which includes one hour of property rights. The property rights training is usually given by the East Tennessee Development District in October or early November. I haven't gotten notice on that yet, but I'll pass that along to you when I do get it. If not, then I'll be able to present that on my own if I have to. I am proposing that we have a training at the next planning commission meeting. If the agenda is not very long, I will have it afterwards, and it will be one hour. That'll at least give you an hour. I've got a presentation that I'm gonna make tomorrow. It's called Ohio Silver Getting Old in East Tennessee. And if you want to learn how things get old in East Tennessee, look at me, maybe a few people around this... But I'm speaking now from experience when I train you. But we'll be looking at data about how people get old in our community. And that will last about an hour. I propose that next to the planning commission meeting, which will be October twenty-seventh. Like I say, I'm gonna be presenting it tomorrow, and I also will be presenting it on the twentieth in Blount County. Mike can be able to get you in on the twentieth presentation if you can't make the planning commission. Other than that, if you're in deficit of planning, it's getting close to the end of the year. I've always offered planning opportunity, I mean, training opportunities in my office. I'll sit you down in front of a TV or a monitor, and if you can stay awake, then you can get an hour or so, whatever you need in training. It might be a very dry CD training from planning. It might be a video, but I do have some resources, and I can set you up in my office if you're in deficit at the end of the year. You do need four hours, and you do need property rights. So I'm gonna have to make some special effort in making sure everybody gets that because that's part of state law. Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, public input on items not on the agenda. Anyone out there want to tell us what we're doing wrong? We are adjourned.